Okay, good evening. The regular meeting of the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for January 16th, 2018, is called to order. I would like everyone to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May we have a rule call, please?
You may. Trustee De Vera?
Present.
Trustee Louis?
Present.
Trustee Logarta and Vice President Shubanka are not here now, but it looks like President Lex is.
President Lex.
Do have a court.
Okay, does everyone have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Or have a copy of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of November 21st, 2017.
Motion to move.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes for November 21st, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, directors report fiscal year 2018-19 and 1920 budgets, this should be interesting.
Should be. Bear with me, I thought probably a good place to start, it's a little bit remedial. We saw this presentation at our last meeting, but I wanted to just give you context again for where we are.
That's good.
As part of the fiscal year, you can see how Daily City compares to other libraries at a little more than a tick over $3 million a year we're spending on libraries, and we'll get into more detail towards the end of the presentation, which is considerably less to quite a few cities around us, especially there are cities out there that are much smaller than us that spend a lot more on their libraries. And then again, the percentage of the city's budget compared to other cities, you can see Daily City, overall Daily City operating budget, libraries jump around 2% and some of our neighboring cities spend over 4% of their municipal budget on library services. So I wanted to give that context for you guys as a reminder.
And all spend more, I noticed.
Pardon?
I said and all spend more than Daily City does.
That is, that is true, as a percent of their budget, absolutely.
As a percent of their budget, yes.
And when you look at population served, we have the greatest population served. So we're spending the less, spending the least, serving the most, which is a difficult thing.
Sounds like a motto.
I'm setting the plate here so that you understand that the difficulty we've had here. And then per capita spending, as President Lex will point out, we're dead last, dead last on per capita spending for our libraries. And the actual staffing, we're not dead last, but consider that San Bruno and Menlo Park don't have four libraries.
Right.
So San Bruno just has the one library, and Menlo Park just has one library too.
They have one small.
Okay, so San Bruno has roughly half the staffing, but we have four times as many libraries.
Yeah, there needs to be a percentage of employees to branches or something like, trying to do some math.
Oh, there's the number of branches, so yeah, San Bruno at one, and yeah, Menlo Park, we're counting it as two, but it's a small annex. So we've got the greatest number of libraries, the fewest per capita dollars, and the smallest percentage of the overall budget for any of the cities in the county that have libraries. And this is a new slide that we didn't share last time, and I believe it was President Lex who was curious about having the number of hours to see how we stack up. So, not bad, but again, consider the number of hours that we're open, that is spread over all four branches. So what's that total number, for us, that's 115 hours, total hours that we're open, spread over four branches. Redwood City's opening the most, and Redwood City's number of hours are 208 weekly hours.
What is that based on?
The number of hours that the libraries are open.
Operation.
The aggregate, in a week, in a week.
Oh, a week, okay.
That's how many, how many business hours, so if you only have the one branch in San Bruno, it's 55 hours, so it's a little bit more than a business week's worth of hours that are open to the public.
Thank you.
And Redwood City has four branches, right?
Yes.
So, okay. That's a substantial difference from Daily City's.
And a smaller population.
True. Okay.
So this is really what we were leading up to for the purposes of this discussion. So we're up to about almost $3.5 million as a total raw number of what our annual operating budget is. And the lion's share of that, you can see is the top line there for salaries, a little more than $2 million go to salaries, our full-time salaries, and about $235,000 for part-time staff. Some of the other costs there, we have fixed costs include everything from custodial services, billing maintenance, utilities, water, gas, electricity, and contract services, it's misspelled, I just noticed that. The big chunk of that is the Peninsula Library Service obligation that we pay to be part of the Peninsula Library System. Library materials at $186,000 seems like a pretty decent number, that's way down from our historic numbers of $275,000, $300,000 we spent on library materials. So that line item has really been chipped at over time.
Ten percent of the dollar.
Yes, so it makes it more difficult, our buying dollar doesn't have, doesn't go as far, and we have fewer buying dollars, so that one stings a little bit. And you know, I know there are some staff members, that's probably the most sensitive subject, is how, over the years, our materials budget has been declining as we've been chopping away at the budget. Technical supplies, and then programming, and databases and ebooks is actually another pretty big chunk of the pie, and other operating costs. So we're starting off at about $3.4 million, and the city is on the verge of putting together the fiscal year budgets for 2018 and 19, and 2019 and 20. So the fiscal year for the city begins July 1, then runs through June 30. So our next fiscal year will be July 1, 2018, through June 30 of 2019, and then the following fiscal year, July 1, 2019, through June 30 of 2020, which just seems so far away, but...
Probably a 2020.
Daily City, and it's not unusual for cities this size to do a two-year operating budget.
Right.
Because it's such a time-consuming, all-consuming exercise that goes on for months and months and months, like I said, we're in the starting stages right now. And the bad news is, once again, expenditures are not keeping, are outpacing revenues. So I will share that as a department, Library and Recreation Services is given a reduction that has been asked to reduce the expenditures by $269,000. That's the bad news.
Wow.
And I see some furrowed brows and some heads nodding. I don't see any fat on the bone in library, and that's part of why I shared that, the context part of the budget.
That's taking library materials all the way through operating costs out.
So, that number, $269,000, is not going to be taken from libraries, or I should say, it's not my desire to take that from libraries, that's a department target. So recreation is a much bigger enterprise than libraries in Daily City, just in the number of people that we serve that pay for services, so there's a little bit more flexibility there.
Excuse me, is this, is this library cut, being cut across the board for other divisions also, or is it just the library?
No, no, the target I was given is for the entire department of Library and Recreation Services. What I'm here to share tonight is I don't see a lot of room to make more cuts to an already very thin section.
For the library section.
So it is, it is my goal, and I'm working with the finance director, at arriving at that target, or as close to that target as I can get, mostly, and I don't want to put it this way, but I can think of a more direct way to say it, on the back of the Recreation Division, sparing further cuts to library. However, with that said, if there's, if there's some fat out there on those expenses that you think we could trim, I'm absolutely all ears and open to suggestions.
Is the whole city being asked for the same percentage?
Every, my understa-
No, my understa-
I don't, I wish the finance director was here. I do understand that every department has been giving, given a target number to reduce. I do not believe it is based on a percentage of the operating budget, I'm not sure what methodology they use to arrive at those numbers. It's funny, I met over an hour with the finance director last week and didn't think to ask that, because I was more focused on how the heck we were going to get our departments.
That's okay, I'm just hoping that it's an even Steven thing, because if it's not, then Wednesday, next Monday maybe?
And it's, I mean, I'm not new to this, this is something we do really every year, but we publish the two-year budget every two years. And we have been sort of in a trough here lately, where we've done a lot more cutting than we have done adding. Because, because our revenues, especially through the recession, our revenues not only went flat, they actually took a pretty deep dip. And just a refresher, most of our revenues are property tax and sales tax. So during the recession, we had about 1,700 foreclosures that weren't paying property taxes, people weren't spending money at a retail center, so both, we took a double whammy hit, we took a drop in property tax, and we took a drop in sales tax revenue. It's starting to creep back up, not at the same pace, you know, you listen to the news and-
Oh yeah, we're booming.
It's crazy what the stock market's been doing.
Yeah.
Somehow, Daily City always managed to get, to get left out of the prosperity, but we are nudging up, and in fact, I did see in an article last week in the San Mateo Journal, across the county, property tax numbers are going nuts. Daily City, I believe the number they, they used in the article was $33.5 million, which is a jump from last year, but again, it's not the same jump as expenses. 2017 was a big year for labor negotiations in Daily City, and some big labor groups got some substantial raises, so that adds kind of to the deficit, you know, you start, so even, probably if we had held everything the same.
Right.
You know, the increase in property tax, and hopefully, sales tax revenues are going to go up too with the expansion of Ceremony Center, but we're not there yet, so that was the reason that when they looked at the balance sheet overall, and the city is usually about $72 million, so less than half of that coming from property tax, $72 million in expenditures roughly, give or take a million or two, is outpacing the revenue side. So that is the challenge we're facing, and I wanted to keep you guys informed, because I'm sure over the next couple months, it'll be a more public discussion about where the budget's going. I know there's at least one more bargaining unit that, unit that has not yet settled, and that directly affects us too, because that would be AFSMI, I can always, I always forget what that acronym's for, the American Federation of School County Municipal Employees, AFSMI is the last of the big bargaining units, all the Teamsters groups, public safety groups are settled. So that gives, that gives the finance folks a better idea of where our expenses will be for the next two fiscal years, based on the number of positions and the salary increases there.
I'd like to bring up something, so at the bargaining table for all of these other groups that have finalized their numbers, speaking, I guess, on behalf of the board, and how, how can we get our voices in that, in that table as well? Because I feel like we're, we're not being represented, or we're not representing ourselves, I think, in the sense that everybody has their bargaining chip, and they're doing what they're doing, so has the library, or does the library have that opportunity?
The full-time library staff are AFSMI employees.
Okay.
They've got a shop steward.
Right.
They, they are at the table.
Right.
Library, library is actually representing recreation, is not, interestingly enough, even though recreation has as many or more AFSMI members. But you know, there's a professional negotiator that AFSMI provides as the business agent, so.
Which is good, which is, I'm glad that they do that for you, because you're part of our team, I mean, we're, but we're, you know, we're representing the library, so...
Well, and AFSMI includes staff members as well.
Okay, okay, I see, I see, I see. Okay, okay. But as far as your question about bringing up how we can better this situation with the budgets, I think when we met at the board effectiveness training, and we had the discussion about how the board members can be more effective with the directors, and with the community, and as, and all of the other people involved in trying to, I guess, be more vocal about the budgets, for example, I think we need to readdress that and find a better way to be, to be more vocal in this situation, because I think we need to, as a board, we have a voice here, and we need to utilize that, and I don't think we're using it effectively right now, and I speak for myself, I'm new, so I'm still learning as well, and how to be more proactive that way, and I think that's something that maybe the board, we take up upon ourselves to communicate that, to see how we can build off of that, and then bring it forth to the table, you know, and our, as we progress in our meetings and so forth. I think we really need to do that, because, I mean, we could meet and talk about things, but we're just, I don't feel like we're moving ahead of the game and, or making any progress or stepping up, and so we just need to figure out what the best solution, from each one of us, we all have a voice, we all have a concern, we're all sitting on the board, and I think everybody contributing would, we could, we could do something about it. And I, and I, you know, I just, not that we're not trying to do anything, but I feel like we need to step up a little bit more as the board, we, you know, we've given this opportunity, I think we need to run with it and try and make it a better situation than it is already.
And I agree, I think the most powerful thing you could do as a board-
Is us, sitting here, yeah.
Is to be advocates, I really do.
Yeah.
Both to the public.
Yes, yes.
And to the city council, and it's-
Yeah.
Tricia, I couldn't agree with you more, but I think for us to try and do this as a five-member group is going to be very difficult, because of restrictions on meetings, and how things are discussed. So what I would like to do is appoint a two-person committee to look at this specifically, the issue of advocacy, and how we can be stronger voices on behalf of the library in the ways you've articulated, and then bring that back to the board for general discussion and ratification. Does that sound like an approach?
Yeah, I mean, that's a start, yeah, no, that's a start, anything-
That's something concrete.
Right.
And that gives us something in a, in a meeting that's agendized, that we can approve and go forward with as a body.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas we can't really develop it as a body. So what I would like to do is ask you to chair that group.
Okay.
And Lily, would you be willing to work on it too?
Yeah, sure. Well-
Yeah, I agree, I mean, we talked about this, like I said, in the effective training, how we can be more proactive, and the ideas that, the ideas that were brought to the table were positive ideas, and things that could benefit towards the budgets, the way the budgets are being cut, things can, you know, we can evaluate and see if it's a, if it's a good way to go, or if it's not a good way to go, and get kind of a vote on it.
Right.
And one of them was, you know, readdressing the Bay Shore Library, for example, I mean, we have four libraries, we, you know, we evaluated it in the training about how the usage was, just kind of based on general ideas and numbers and talking about it, and now we have this event that's coming up where they're doing an open house for the Bay Shore for the, what is it, the Children's Center, and I'm just like, oh my gosh. Okay, it is a must, it is a must, but we did talk about, like, you know, the, the operating behind it all, the overall picture of that, of that particular library, and you know, you never want to see anything go away, especially when it's on, when it's too good in the community, but if it's really hurting us, then we have to really evaluate the situation.
That one kills me.
Well, I think that's going to be a major point of discussion, whether or not we should look to concentrate our efforts, or if we should protect the resources that are delivering the services to the community. And that, that's kind of a tough call.
It is, it is.
But one that this board should engage with. So let me ask for some advice, can individual members of the trustees send their thoughts or ideas to Tricia? For example, if somebody wants to, I don't know, has an idea of advocacy, let's just say, write notes to the council members, or whatever it is, can that be suggested, and then these two guys, girls, bring it together and present it?
Yeah, I'm trying to go back to my own Brown Act training, and I'll, and I'll double check, I think if you're sending an unsolicited email to the two of them.
Right.
And not engaging in a dialogue or-
That's what I'm trying to do.
If it's a one-way, hey, something to consider, yeah, you can do that.
Here are my thoughts, please include them in your-
But I would caution the members of the committee not to start a serial email exchange with the rest of you, but the two of you can meet whenever, wherever you want.
Yes, yeah.
And you could, you could weigh in.
So they could receive our ideas-
Yes.
-without violating the Brown Act.
I believe, I believe so.
And then we, the two of us, can talk when we need to talk about that, and that's still fine to do.
And then ideally-
I'm saying something over there.
Well, no, she, that's going to wait. It's the Republican-
Is he an attorney? No. But, and ideally, if you meet in between the full trustees, you would report out what you discussed.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so is that something, you guys, I hear you're willing to accept that responsibility, so I do appoint you.
I think so, okay.
And if you need meeting space or resources, or have questions, or Chayla or I, you know, don't hesitate.
Okay.
And I would ask you to bring a report to our next meeting, February meeting.
Okay.
With recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, Joseph, do you want to continue?
Yeah, not, I mean, we've seen these numbers, but you know, the other slide, I really, I like to share this with people, because I think it really is eye-opening, and I probably need to update it now, but-
Right.
I think all of you have seen it before, I don't know if members of our audience have seen this slide before, but you don't have to go back very far in Daily City's history to a time when the Police Department and the library were funded about the same. And the library is that solid white line that goes back, I think, what did we go back, to 1978? It is almost a flat line from 1978 to 2015, the blue line is the Police Department, and where we were once evenly funded, the Police Department now has an operating budget of over $31 million, 10 times as much as the library. So in, in the ensuing years, between 1978 and 2015, Police Department expenditures grew tenfold, and library remained flat. That's, that's part of the problem, that is why the rest of the slides look the way they do.
Right.
This community hasn't invested in libraries the way we've invested in police, and you know, off the chart there at the top on the yellow line is, the whole general fund has been, been going up. Except for, you can see that pretty steep dip, that is, that was the recession in foreclosures at right about 2009, 2010. Anyway, and then I think another thing, and I probably should update this too, because it's been, this is from last year data, but we've got public elementary schools in this city where we have 60% of third grade class that cannot read at grade level, and to be taking resources away from the population at a time when the need is clearly great is, is something to think about too. So, it's all sort of fuel for your advocacy, to give you some context, and, so, it's not a, I mean, you've already taken direction by forming a committee, I'm not looking for any action, really, it's just I wanted to share and update the information, kind of follow up our discussion that we had, I think that was in December, or was that November when we talked about that stuff, but-
December, yeah.
We're, we're right around the corner, because by, by spring, the budget discussion will heat up, and we'll try to keep you as informed as I am about it. And it is a moving target, I don't know that the target cuts were based on the revenue projections from modeling or for actual numbers, so sometimes, you can't, you can't go too far out and be accurate, but I don't know if, if the trend is going to continue, especially on the sales tax, which is a good thing, the more, the more properties that turn over, and people are selling houses in Daily City for, you know, a million, a million and a half, that, that helps. Thanks to Prop 13, we have some people that have lived here 40, 50, 60 years, and the sales tax, excuse me, the property tax on those parcels remains-
Very low.
Comparatively low.
Yeah, yeah.
Comparatively?
Comparatively.
Very low, very low.
Well, I didn't, I don't want to offend anybody who's receiving the benefit of Prop 13, if you got it, that's a great thing, but, yeah, it's, it's sort of where I'm sitting, not fair, where you'd have an identical house side by side that are worth exactly the same, one's paying $12,000 a year in property tax, the other one's paying $2,000 maybe, but we have that situation all over, as we get more of those $12,000 a year property tax houses, you know, brings everything up.
It would be nice, yes. But people don't want to leave, because they can't get back in, we just had this discussion. Once you leave, you can't come back in.
It is tough. Anyway, that wraps up my presentation, if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
So, to paraphrase what I heard you say, even though, let me clarify, is the $269,000 reduction target for libraries alone, or is it-
No, that is for the Department of Library and Recreation Services.
Okay. And while you're not saying there won't be any reduction in libraries, the majority or the bulk would come out of recreation?
I would think the vast majority of it won't come out of recreation.
Is there any, do either of you foresee the possibility of staff positions being eliminated, either part-time or full-time?
I don't see that today, but if things don't improve, I don't know how that's going to be avoidable further down the line, but I don't foresee it going into this next fiscal year.
Yeah.
And in fact, just, just so we're all clear, most of you knew Barbara Daniels, who was our youth services librarian.
Yes.
When, when she resigned, that freed up a position, and we fully intend on filling that position, so we're not, we can't, we, if we lose another position, we will be in a position of either shrinking hours again or closing libraries, we're just on the razor's edge of keeping those doors open, especially during flu season and vacation season, when people are out, we're scrabbling to keep the doors open. So I don't anticipate losing any full-time positions in the library division, and I sure hope that we don't lose any hours, a lot of, part of- hope that we don't lose any hours, a lot of part of.
We can't.
Yeah, exactly.
We just can't.
We're lean already.
You just can't do it.
We're extremely lean.
Yeah.
I think we saw how lean with the graphs.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Nope.
Since you mentioned Barbara, where are we in the process of replacing her? Do we have people that are being interviewed or?
We're past that. We've made an offer.
Oh, really?
Someone from out of the area. And March, I think, is our target start date, March 12.
Oh, super.
Okay.
Well, that's great. We'll look forward to meeting him or her in the spring.
It's a her and.
It's a what?
It's a her.
Oh, okay.
It's a her.
Yeah, when she's on board and acclimating, we'll drag her out.
Super.
So you guys can meet her.
Okay.
Okay, winter reading challenge. Shayla, that must be yours.
On a happy note. This is just kind of a small show and tell thing and so that I could get maybe five more people to participate. For the last couple of years, we've done winter reading. It started as an initiative. The Westlake staff wanted to do something fun for adults. We often do things just for kids. So they launched it as an adult-only program initially and then we've spread it to all four libraries right now and we have a youth and an adult program. It's very low-key, very low-cost. We are just inviting people to do kind of a reading bingo. It's a classic librarian thing to encourage people to maybe try reading in different areas and kind of expand the horizons and for the youth, of course, to keep them reading over the winter holiday break from school. It's a, you know, read on your own time, report back, and they're entered in a raffle for different prizes. The youth challenge includes some fun little, you know, almost like a menu from a restaurant or something, little puzzles and things in addition to the reading bingo. And this is going on right now and doesn't end until the end of February and I invite you all to join us.
End of February, okay.
That would be fun. Except can I exchange free choice for horror?
Absolutely, it's a free choice.
Free choice for horror.
Okay. If you need suggestions, if it's a genre that you don't have a lot of familiarity with, there are some bibliographies that have been provided by librarians and you can always ask the reference librarian on duty to provide you with a suggestion.
Okay.
Nice.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to the trustees' report from the Daly City Public Library Associates. Since we last met, the DCPLA had their board retreat, which served as their meeting in December. The board retreat was on December 5th and on the agenda was a review of 2017, what goals had been established and what had been accomplished. I thought it would take too much time to go over each of the goals and where DCPLA was on that, but suffice to say, they've made good progress. They didn't accomplish all of their goals, but many were accomplished and many were partially accomplished. They also discussed a strategy for 2018 and are looking at organizing DCPLA into functional committees to try and take some of the workload off of Susan Brizden Smith's shoulders.
Okay.
They're also going to further discuss the annual plan for 2018 at the January meeting. Pat Martel was invited to lunch and there was a very nice candid conversation with Pat about libraries and, you know, Pat's view of the city and the budget. And of course, she reiterated how important libraries are to her, but with all due respect to Pat, you know, what shall I say, a heartfelt commitment is not, doesn't necessarily pencil out in the budget.
I was going to say.
Have to wait and see how that works. The action items at the meeting were to elect new officers, so Tom Norris is the president, Jane Chambers is the vice president, Bernie Vidalis is the secretary, and Pauline Fong Martinez is the financial officer. The Westlake Dropbox Fund the Need Project was discussed. $4,500 out of about $9,500 needed has been collected. That breaks down into $2,800 collected from donations at the St. Pat's Luncheon and a $1,700 donation from Ceramati in various forms. So $5,000 is still required. DCPLA was going to try and meet with local, I'll call them, potential donors that are closer to the library and action on this item has been deferred to January. The action potentially being if there's no possibility of outside funding, that DCPLA will consider going into their operating budget and taking $5,000 out to satisfy that particular need that the library staff identified. The town of Colma provided a grant of $2,000, which is restricted for children's books. A bylaws revision was discussed to change the number of directors at DCPLA. Right now, the bylaws state that there will be a minimum of seven and a maximum of 11 directors and that was changed to a minimum of seven and a maximum of 15 directors. And then the last item was that they're seeking, we're seeking and talking to someone about providing accounting and membership maintenance services. And I don't know where that is now, so. Are there any questions?
Can I bring up something?
Sure.
Susan also just wanted to remind us of January 23rd, which will be the unveiling of the new children's area at the Bay Shore Library, as we just mentioned earlier. It's at 12:30, so if anybody's free, she's welcoming everyone to come. And then the second thing was on February 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Ceremony Library Community Room, there will be three authors on hand talking about their books. Veronica Montes, is it Tony Robles? And then the other one is Renee Macalino Rutledge? Rutledge? So you're welcome to come as well. She invited the board as well if you wanted to come attend to that one. And then the last thing was Tuesday, March 13th, is the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon. So if you want to reserve the date on that, Tuesday, the 13th, at noon, sorry, at the Colma Community Center. So you guys are free.
Always a fun time.
R S P, yes, I will be there.
Thank you, Tricia, for adding that.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving to announcements and communications, I would like to thank Tricia for writing and the staff for posting her background statement.
Oh, I was like, was I right?
Board of Trustees' website. So that's two out of five.
I encourage you guys to write and send your photo, please.
Seriously, if there's any, gee, I don't know what to say, or I'm too modest, I'm happy to get together with you and we can bang something out that's fairly painless and that will really present you nicely to the community. But to be an advocate, people have to know who's on the board and they have to know what our interest is and what our background is. So this is important. So please, by February, get your statements in, either with my help or not, and Shayla will see that they get posted. Joseph, go ahead. I've got another item or two, but why don't you talk about this?
From the History Guild. I just thought I would share with you. It's always a good time. There's some football playoffs happening on Sunday, January 21st. If you would like to learn more about the history of San Francisco during the Civil War, the History Guild of Daly City, Colma is hosting a program with a guest lecturer named Monica Trobets, who's written a book about Antebellum and Civil War San Francisco. From Vigilantes to Duelists is the name of her presentation and that will be Sunday, January 21st, 2:00 PM at the Dolger Center at Westlake Park. It is free.
And then they'll have a field trip to the dueling site right around the corner. That's cool. That's very cool.
Another thing I'd like to share with the board, because I believe it came up in our Board Effectiveness Training session, was our mission statement. And in fact, we have a mission statement. And it is, "The Daly City Library Board of Trustees, in its advisory role, shall advocate literacy for all ages and all people, communicate constituent needs to the city council and library staff, and facilitate fulfillment of the library's future needs and vision." Now, that's published somewhere other than on this piece of paper that Susan Brizden Smith gave me.
I was going to say, where is that?
Where to find it?
I have never.
That is the first time I heard it.
I know.
Okay, well, I've seen it someplace else, so I'll find the source.
Okay.
And I'll bring that up at the next meeting. But that's a good starting point.
Just put that on our website.
Yeah, that's a good idea, actually.
Certainly right for updating.
Yeah.
Should I put it on the, for agenda building?
Sure. Agenda building sounds good. Also, I don't know, has anyone ever seen the city ordinance that governs the Daly City Library Board of Trustees?
I probably have, but I just don't remember why.
I'd have to say the same.
Okay, well, what I'll do is send you a link to this because it's interesting in terms of what we are supposed to do and how we're supposed to act. And one of the most interesting parts to me. I thought I knew exactly where to find it.
That's the speaker.
Oh, here we go. 226.140 is called Maintenance and Purchase Tax Levy. The city council may, in making the annual tax levy, as a part thereof, levy a tax for the purpose of maintaining the public library and purchasing property necessary therefore. Such tax shall be in addition to other taxes, the levy of which is permitted in the city.
Well, there we go.
That's the answer. That's the answer to all our problems.
You know, it's an interesting addition to our discussion about budget and what the council has the power to do should they choose to exercise it. And this was revised in 2012, I believe.
Yeah, I'll double check. And I know I've shared this with President Lex. I live in Berkeley and there is a big chunk of my property tax every year that goes straight to the Berkeley Public Library. I want to say it's like $600.
Really?
It's a lot of money.
Per household?
Per parcel. I don't know if it's per household, how that works.
So that's considered like a household.
I may be overstating that a little bit, but it's not an insignificant amount of money.
Wow.
Which would explain why Berkeley's got some pretty amazing libraries. They're well-funded.
Well, I'll send this set of ordinances out to you guys.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. I'm sure I have that, but I just.
It's online in the muc code if, and it's searchable.
Well, that's exactly where I got it.
Yeah, it's searchable, too.
Oh, okay, okay.
I mean, you send a link, that'll be a reminder to look at it.
Okay, so agenda building for next meeting. Well, actually, are there any other announcements or communications?
Well, I just wanted to provide you with an advocacy alert, pass it on. I just, I received it from the California Library Association and they are passing it along from the American Library Association. Because at the federal level, we're looking at the Institute of Museum and Library Services and funding for the MLSA, Museum and Library Services Act. And that, like so many things, does sometimes trickle down and affect us directly, but in a larger sense, it affects libraries in this country. And so they are hoping that people will encourage their senator to co-sponsor this so that the agency can be authorized, which gives it a much better chance of being funded. And I can provide you with some additional information.
That'd be great, yeah. We can go look at that.
And then I also wanted to let you know that we had, Santa wrote to 243 young people in Daly City. It was a surprisingly successful project and it's, I think it's the second or is it the third time that we've done it? And people really enjoyed the program. It's a small thing, a low-cost thing, but it really did touch a lot of people and it gave children an opportunity to practice their writing and it was just heartwarming. So I wanted to share something fun.
Nice.
Shayla, did you want to mention the badges also?
Oh, we can, it came up at our training.
Training, yep.
There was a discussion of potentially ordering badges for library trustees that work, you know, table at different events and things like that. So I checked to see, you know, if I could get them from Office Depot and they're one-inch by three-inch, very classic plastic badges. You have an assortment of options for the backing. It would just be white plastic with blue lettering. And so offline, we can discuss if you would like one. They're about $14 a pop and has an air of officialness.
I think it'd be good. I think it's worth it.
Isn't it an offer?
Mm-hmm.
You know, in this day of budget austerity, that $75 that could go to something else, you know, in our system. And I think, you know, we're not, I don't know. We could put our business card in a plastic sleeve and pin it to our garment. I know $75 isn't a lot, but it's like, is it the Oakland School Board that just voted themselves a raise?
Perhaps that could.
And, you know, it's, they said, well, it's just a token amount. Well, their departments are being cut severely and a token amount to raise is not something you, they, well, they're getting a lot of flack for it. So I suppose it could be on an individual basis, just like, you know, we do business cards.
Right, because I don't have a business card, but I wouldn't mind paying for a badge.
I'm willing to pay out of my own pocket. I don't need to have the library.
No, that's even, yeah. Well, that's a good idea. I mean, that would be a good contribution to support.
Okay.
Because they look, yeah, one by three is like, I don't know, Duggan's badge. It'd be like about that size.
Probably.
From the same location?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, it's a good, you could just carry it at all times with you, so.
Yeah.
Is it magnet pack or pin?
Yeah, mine's a magnet pack. That's what the key is.
Oh, okay.
But you can do that or you can do a pin.
You don't want to ruin your clothes with a pin.
No, so magnets have been more.
Well, is that, is that a pin one that, based on the price that you got? Is it a?
That's a magnet, but I think the pin was a dollar less. You actually have a couple of other choices as well. You can do it as a lanyard or, so. We can talk offline about your, if you have preferences.
Okay.
Yeah, if people want to sponsor their own, that's great, too.
I am willing to, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll get them on a, you know, we'll buy them for ourselves basis then.
Okay.
Super.
Okay.
Great idea.
Thank you.
So agenda building.
Okay.
Let's continue to have the budget updates on our agenda. I think that's critical and we should talk about that every month. We're going to have a board role and advocacy report from our committee.
The mission statement?
Mission statement, very good. Thank you.
And I believe we are due for reorganization.
Okay, and, yes, put reorganization discussion on the February agenda. And the reason I'm, well, we can talk about that in February, but yes, that's good. Are there any other items that people, trustees would like to add to the agenda for February? Or staff?
No, I think, I think I have my.
Yeah.
All right.
I have my duties.
I have my duties.
So with that, I would welcome a comment from members of the public. Pam DiGiavani is here and you're welcome to come up and take your several minutes.
Good evening, thank you, everybody. First, I'd like to say it's nice to sit out here and listen to the commitment of something that's important, reading. People forget about the basics when life is beginning to, things are getting very stressful for people these days and literacy is such a huge issue. So that to know that we actually have people that are serving the community and taking the time and the importance and even taking extra time for a subcommittee is incredible. And I know that no one likes, and I know Mr. Kern, he's so committed to everything and actually in our city. And to discuss a budget is never comfortable and anytime you hear the word cuts or anything like that. But on a note where I don't know where the monies will go or what will happen, we don't know the future, but I will say that probably, hopefully in November, there will be an increase on the TOT tax, which is a transit-oriented tax, which will help us, which that is the one on our hotels. So which currently is really low and then hopefully it's, we look at, it's 10%. So hopefully maybe 12 or 14%. San Francisco's 14, so that will be an extra revenue. And also our hotel has already been approved about which one, they've already, council's already committed to which one they want and they've already began with our Tatum. Mothershead gave her approval to start negotiations. And from the planning perspective, when I spoke with Michael, because it is economic development and I wanted to make sure that it will be a prior, one of our priorities in the development, because we have many projects in the works coming down the way, but because Ms. Mothershead and Michael know that, they always told me that that's usually will be a priority, so it will be more expedited. I mean, it won't be, of course, overnight, but it won't be something that will be put on the back burner. So, and that would be the first one at Juniper Sarah. So, I mean, there's other things, but at least I know it's doom and gloom and you guys have hung in there and the staff and everything and it's nice to hear there's no staff cuts at this time and that someone is hired. Because at one time, years ago, there were staff cuts and no one wants to see anyone lose their job, especially if you hear Macy's at Stone Town.
Yeah.
And we're lucky enough that our Ceremati Mall that we're bringing in, again, thanks to Ms. Mothershead and other people, bringing it in, you know, that we're not having to do that. So hang in there. I know we've been through some tough times and as a community together, when everybody's working their pieces of the puzzle and they're, and please don't forget our Bay Shore, I know is the only library they have and they do seem to be the ones that get like cut off. So let's try to make sure that they keep at least that one, the Boys and Girls Club and everything else, because those children are one of the underserved in our community. And I know that everybody will try to do that with Mr. Kern and everybody. So not enough to say, but thank you and I'm sure it's past two minutes.
It's all right.
I never get to go past two minutes.
Time's rough.
But I appreciate everything you do. Thank you. I'm just being a little advocate out here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
And thank you also for bringing the perspective of the Planning Commission to our meeting and sharing some of the information that you're privy to. Thank you. Right. Before we adjourn, I wanted to just make one other comment. It was buried in my papers here and that is the new activity guide, which is out in the lobby. I picked it up. And, you know, I always wished the library had more pages to be represented in the guide. Having said that, I really like what's here. I like the fact that we've got a library calendar with activities and events. Teen Tech Week is mentioned, youth library programs, adult literacy programs or library programs, the ABC Mouse feature. So I think, you know, you guys have done a great job, given the four pages you have to work with. Representing what's going on in the libraries today, so thank you for that. Are there any other comments or thoughts before we adjourn?
Nope.
Meeting's adjourned.